Are we good Devon?
Appears to be up.
Good. All right, we'll call the order the September fourteenth.
It is.
The September fourteenth edition of the Board of Education meeting for Tecumseh Public Schools. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Suzanne Moore.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, it looks like our first item on the agenda is good news, which is our 2020 and 2021 school opening. Mr. Rick Hildery.
Yes, for the first time in about 180 days, we had students in our buildings in front of our teachers and online. So it was really, really an exciting week last week to see the kids come in, to have our staff working and preparing our kids. Just getting people comfortable with being back together in our learning spaces. Aside from the rain Tuesday morning last week, which was certainly not anything in our control. I think that things went as well as could be expected. Everything's not perfect yet. We have lots of feedback from families and even more so, I think, from our staff internally about things that we want to continue to try to do better in a variety of areas. But simply getting kids back into a learning routine and can't say enough about how well the kids are doing at every location in terms of taking our procedures seriously with the distancing and the hand washing and the sanitizing and keeping things clean and hands to themselves. All those things first week was just really remarkable. So it was exciting and not without challenge, but in general, we're real happy to say that school is back in session.
All right, thank you, Rick. Devon, can you check the sound on our live feed, please? Sounds good. All right, hold on just a second for some housekeeping. Incidentally, after our last meeting, we did have an email from Zoom apologizing for their technical problems the day before, so I'm not sure that some of our technical problems at the last meeting were not Zoom's technical problems. This is our second hybrid meeting, so we'll see how this one goes and work through the problems. Milt, can you hear us now?
I can hear you good.
All right, it looks like Milt's ready to go. Moving on, revisions and approval of the agenda. Are there any revisions to the agenda? Barring that, could I get a motion to approve, please? Oh, wait, there is no public comment. However, I must officially recognize that no one registered for our public comment tonight. So we're going to move on to revisions of agenda and approval of agenda. Any revisions?
I asked that we, you know, discussion about busing for extracurricular activities. Because I know there's been a lot of hubbub about it and we're in a much better financial position than we were before. So I asked to add that to the discussion tonight.
Is there support? Okay, roll call Suzanne.
Aye.
Becky.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
Jump down here to virtual. John.
Aye.
Milt.
Aye.
All right, we are adding that to the agenda.
Kevin, could we also add a discussion? Could we add a discussion item for the admin building?
John, you would like to add that as an official discussion item tonight?
Yeah, just a quick run through five minutes.
Discussion of our admin building. Is there a second on that?
Okay.
Roll call Suzanne.
Aye.
Becky.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Milt.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. All right, that is added to the agenda also. Are there any further revisions to the agenda? All right, could I get a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Roll call Suzanne.
Aye.
Becky.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
I lost him.
I'm here, aye.
John.
Aye.
All right, agenda is approved as revised. It's going to move us on to our scheduled reports, which is our monthly finance report. Kelly.
Good evening, board.
Good evening, Kelly.
Ah, so I just have a few things to discuss this tonight with you. As you can see, I significantly reduced the number of reports that submitted. I know you all are busy folks, but obviously if you prefer to see those reports, I will certainly add them back to the next meeting. Some of the reports I eliminated was the pool reports. Obviously, up until just recently, there have been no activity at the pool, so there was no changes. But I would recommend that maybe you look at those pool reports quarterly or perhaps semi-annually. Obviously, that's up to the board's discretion. Just let me know. And then I also eliminated the summary reports because I give you the detailed reports and that information is exactly the same. You're just seeing more of it with the detailed report. Obviously, that's up to the board's discretion at any given time. If there's reports or certain formats you would like to see, let me know. But in the meantime, you receive the monthly cash report, the detail of revenue, the detail of expenditures, the monthly check register, and then both comparative reports. What is the board's preference? Do you need me to go over those or just questions only?
We can do questions only and I'm okay with it.
I'm good with that too.
Check online. John, Milt, any opinion on that?
The only thing I would ask is that we get the check register in an Excel format so we can sort through it easier.
Okay.
And then I had a question. And this has come up before. We've never really done anything with it, but we have a lot of cash setting in just a basic checking account. I'm not sure how much actual cash we need on a monthly basis, but I don't think it's $5.7 million. So just, I'd like us to maybe take a look at being able to move that cash out of a basic checking account into maybe something that's interest-bearing, just so we can, you know, make that money work for us.
Okay, so noted.
Milt, anything to add?
I'll go with the question only, but I'd like to see the pool report on a quarterly basis at least.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for Kelly?
Okay, so just a quick discussion on some upcoming items. So I understand the board has a finance committee. Obviously, let me know how frequently you would like to meet. Obviously, there was things that I would like to meet with the finance committee, like probably going over budget amendments, proposed budgets, probably award bids, things of that nature, any big ticket items. But obviously, again, it's up to the board's discretion. Kind of let me know what your thoughts are and how frequently you would like to meet. And then would like to schedule a finance committee meeting for sometime before next meeting so that we can discuss the upcoming audit presentation that is going on as scheduled. So we will have that presentation next board meeting and then obviously the vote will be first meeting in October.
Kelly, has there been any rumor, any word about funding for the schools, dollar amounts this year?
Correct. They did have the August revenue consensus. Things looked better than what they anticipated back in May, so that was good news. You know, it is likely it will be flat funding from the prior fiscal years. That means our foundation allowance or per pupil will be $8,111 per student. But nothing official has occurred yet. I do have a scheduled webinar this coming Friday where upcoming legislation and the budget will be discussed. So hopefully I will know more then, but nothing official as of right now.
All right, thank you very much.
I think they're gonna do it flat and I think then they're gonna appropriate funds later on because their estimates have been so far off. I mean, initially they were saying $4 billion, now we're $900 million. And so I think when they appropriate this money, they're gonna come back later on in the year and appropriate some money to schools because the tax revenue is up so much. So that's, that's what I think.
There was a
I'm following pretty closely.
A tweet from our professional organization Legislative Liaison about a half an hour ago that said a budget deal has been announced, but not, no agreements in the detail, just that it stipulates no cuts to revenue for public schools.
Awesome.
Yep, so that's a step closer to official, but not official official.
Right.
It's like Tim said, I think it's
Yeah, I mean, we budgeted $700.
Good news, so.
I mean, that's a $1.8 million swing.
Exactly.
Not counting what we were thinking last year, so that's three points, yeah, $3.6 million, so, yeah.
Yeah, we'll take flat. That's a win this year.
Yes, absolutely. And we were able to give our teachers a raise, okay? They were able to get the raise. Other staff got raises too, from what I understand, so I think we're doing well, so, yep.
All right, were there any other questions, comments, concerns for Kelly? They're quiet.
I chair the finance committee, so John and Milt and I will make ourselves available for you. Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Don't worry, guys, I spoke for you.
All right, thank you, Kelly. That will move us right into our discussion items tonight. First discussion item is the board member appointment. Since our last board meeting, I've sent out a couple of emails, done some fact-finding. I assume that everyone has had a chance to read that over. We have had an advertisement of sorts in the paper and a news story and some board members have been out recruiting. That has resulted in two. Hold on a second, yep, two total volunteers for that position. So I've talked to some of the board members and there's a preference to use them, use their initial rather than use their full names when discussing and then release the name of the appointee after we take a vote, just as a matter of courtesy, privacy. Is there any complaint with that?
Well, I mean, if someone foias the information, they're gonna have it, so I mean, it's public information, so I think
It is, in the end, it's public information if they want to go through it.
All right, so I mean, if they didn't want their name out there, they wouldn't put their name in the hat, so.
Do you feel strongly about using the name or would you like?
I think we should. It sounds like backdoor stuff to me if you don't, so, yeah, I think you gotta be open and transparent about it, so.
All right. Is there any?
Well, there's a, there's a point to people's privacy too. I mean, if they wanted.
Well, then they shouldn't put their name in the hat. This is a public position.
I mean, I really don't care.
I'm fine to make a motion on it.
Is there anyone who wants to make a motion on it or would you like to continue with discussion?
I know this, that neither candidate expressed a desire to keep their name out of it in any contingency. So I, they didn't say definitely include me, but neither one of them said, I want to keep this anonymous until it's decided. So I think that you're, you're safe either way you decide.
Okay, all right. Was there anyone who wanted to do anything more than take a motion on it and a vote on it? No need for interviews. Both individuals are well-known to the board.
Yeah, they're both great candidates, so, I mean, without a doubt.
It's a win-win for us.
So, yeah.
Is there any discussion to be had from the online pair? John, Milt?
No, I know who I want. I'm, I'm ready to vote.
All right, Milt?
I'm fine. I know what's going on and I know both candidates and like you said, they're both strong candidates, so. We gotta go into more discussion about it. I'm willing to do that, or if you want a motion, I'm willing to do that.
All right, if there's no further discussion about it, then let's just, that is already in our action items, I do believe. It was supposed to be correct, yes. That's in our action items, so we'll take a vote on it when we get to action items. Next is bank signatory in discussion items. Rick?
Uh, we just need to get Kelly added to the names and that has to be done by official board action. So that'll come up again as an action item.
Do we have, is there a certain amount that has to require two signatures or something? Or, you know, I know a lot of organizations do that, like over $5,000, you gotta have two signatures or?
Over 10,000, in our policy, over 10,000 requires board approval, right?
Okay.
Is there anything at a lower level for two signatures or anything that requires?
Not in policy, no.
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 Is that something that you wanted to possibly add at a lower level?
I will point out, due to the internal control structures in our accounting software, that there's multiple approval levels before it even gets to the invoice payment stage.
Okay.
So there's a lot of eyes on the process.
Including mine.
Is there any breakout for dollar amounts like Tim was alluding to? Is there at a 5,000 level, it has to go electronically to the superintendent? So that's already in place without the physical signature?
Correct.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
All right, any other discussion on that? Jump online. Looks like John and Milt are okay?
Yep, fine, yep.
All right. Moves us forward to the Extended Continuity of Learning Plan. Mr. Hildery?
Okay, so included in your packet is that document. It's about 11 pages long. It's a template that was provided as a result of Public Act 149 and the agreement between the governor and the legislature to basically ensure that schools were accounting for students and also accounting for learning during the 2020, 21 school year. So as you scroll through it, the first page, there's just a simple statement of explanation of why this is in existence. Page two is our own biographical information here at the district and the dates. The first date is that this plan has to be set and ready for approval by the 15th of September. So we're a day ahead of that deadline and then it has to be submitted to our ISD by October 1st. And with our next meeting coming up on the 28th, we're okay in terms of meeting that deadline as well. The next couple of pages are the assurances and requires a signature by myself and the board president. That's all standard language. Every plan in Michigan will include those assurances and those signatures. And then you get into the learning plan narrative. Several professional organizations in the state of Michigan worked on template language for these and then districts could customize based on their own preferences or their own needs. So much of this language is templated and will show up in many plans across the state of Michigan. Where necessary, it's noted for Tecumseh Public Schools or TPS, but a lot of the language is, is going to be the same. There's some statements. It asks some questions and then it asks, the answers go on to talk about how the district will achieve those things or account for those certain things. Most importantly, on page seven are the educational goals that stretch on to page eight. It requires you to set goals for reading and language arts from fall to spring for grades kindergarten through eighth and also goals for performance in math from fall to spring for grades kindergarten through eight. So those statements are made in terms of saying that those, those areas will improve performance during that time. It did not ask and the template language did not require any specific amount of growth, just improvement. So we will, if there are updates about being more specific, we certainly will react to those as needed. The rest of it, there's, there's language in there about delivery, what sort of curriculum we're going to need or we're going to use and our academic standards, that's, that's probably the one that's the most customized for Tecumseh because we talk about the types of curriculum that we will utilize in terms of using Google Classroom and CSO for K through two. All those things are, are customized. Those are not necessarily templated from what the state sent. Assessment and grading is in line, not only with the Michigan standards, but our own policy on grading. So that's kind of a blend of the template language and then Tecumseh language. The technology language there is, connects to what we said in our return to school plan, the roadmap plan. So that is a link to that document. And then there's some template language in there about students with special needs, IEPs and 504s. That's all pretty standard legal language that we're going to assure that we're going to uphold the rights of those students. And, yeah, I think that that's it. So if you haven't had a chance to read it, please look it over. Again, it needs to be approved and sent to the ISD to be posted right after our next meeting. So you've got a couple of weeks to look it over and make any suggestions that you might have the final version.
Rick, have they pushed back the third grade reading law because of the whole COVID thing? I mean, we're gonna have some kids that are behind right now, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can, we can all agree that there's gonna be some gaps.
Right.
The reading law was set aside for the 1920 school year.
Okay.
At the federal level, the US Department of Education is currently saying that there will be standardized testing required for 2021.
Okay.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that the third grade reading law is going to be something in Michigan that has to be followed. I think that we're still waiting for clear direction on whether or not that's going to be in place.
Okay.
All we're saying in this plan is that achievement is going to increase.
Right.
And certainly after being away from school for 180 days, we would hope that our, our return to school would have some impact on their learning.
Right.
And we expect that it will.
All right, any other questions for Rick?
Rick?
Yes.
Are students wanting to change, like if they're face-to-face and wanted to go to distance, you're not allowing that?
Well, the, the way that you phrase the question is it's much more allowable for students to move from the face-to-face environment and into either the distance or the virtual. It's not as easy for families to ask to come back into face-to-face because our safety protocols are based on the social distancing that we get out of having only 70% of our students back face-to-face. So what we're doing right now is that we're telling families if a natural switch becomes available where a student either moves from one of our versions to the other or if a family leaves the district, moves out of Tecumseh and opens a space in a face-to-face classroom as feasibly as we can, we will move a student either from a distance to the face-to-face environment. Luckily, right now, the list is rather small of the number of people who are waiting for one of those. It's less than 10 in the district, so it's manageable right now. But when we put out the information about the three versions, we did ask for, for everyone to make a semester commitment so that we can revisit things and see how they sit in January and reset the numbers. But in order for us to maintain the, the safe approach that we're taking right now, we're asking people to stay in the place that they requested unless, again, something opens up. We have a list of, of a few people who are interested in coming back face-to-face, but right now, we just can't accommodate them.
Unless something changes about how far we have to distance.
Exactly.
That could change everything.
Right, if we change phases.
Right.
If we change out of phase four to phase five and eventually get to phase six, then that changes. What I'm speaking about is all based on staying in phase four.
So if we go to phase five, that would be different?
Right.
It probably would be different, yes.
So population-wise, we're kind of capped out with face-to-face?
Yeah, yeah, we have about as many kids right now face-to-face as we really want to push in terms of distancing and, and safety protocols. I think that that number is a little lower in the, in the ELCs because that's the place where we have different mask requirements. So I think maintaining that safe social distancing is something to really focus on. And then classes at the high school, you know, the, the distancing is a little bit less and but we're requiring masks there. And, and so far, five days in, you know, we, we haven't dealt a lot with kids who are refusing to do anything in our safety protocol, so that's very helpful.
You mentioned if kids move out of the district, do we have anything for kids move in? Are we wait-listing them?
Say that again?
If people are moving into the district.
Right, if people are coming here brand new, we will allow them to select based on feasibility. If, if there's something available, live face-to-face, we'll make an accommodation for that. But our first offer frankly is probably going to be one of the online version.
Interesting, okay.
And I'm assuming that's contingent on grade level?
Yeah, because it's not the same at every grade.
Right, correct. So we probably have some grade levels where we could put a kid in without sacrificing our social distancing, but I'm gonna guess at least half of them, there's just no way to put a kid in without sacrificing, right?
Yep, and, and if we can, we're gonna try because I, I have said all along that our, our best, our best efforts are made face-to-face. There, there's just a difference in the format, whatever we provide. So we want to try to get them face-to-face if we can, but we do have to maintain, you know, what we've said in our plan is going to be safe.
All right, any other comment on that topic?
Well, thanks for the explanation. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. I'm glad you asked.
All right, that'll move us on to our first added topic, which is, what, what? Okay, moves on to our first added topic, which is busing for extracurriculars. Tim, this was your add-on. Would you like to start?
Well, yeah, especially after, you know, we've just, you know, we instituted the pay-to-play. Well, yeah, especially after, you know, we've just, you know, we instituted the pay to play. And which I was all in favor for because of our financial diars that we were hearing from the state. But now that we are not in a dire position, I think we can offer the busing to the event. Parents can bring them home as well, like we did last year, but I think we can afford to do that now. I mean, don't you agree? I mean.
Yeah, you know, and, and John Zajak has asked me more than once since athletics were reinstated, if we were going to be able to do that. And I've, I've gone with my standard financial answer that Kelly and I both stick to is we really need to have some kind of indication from the state that, that the budget really is improved before we can make those promises. But it sounds like tonight that, that things are as good as we hope that they're going to be. And we could be reinstating some things because we cut, when we set the budget at the end of June, we cut 20% out of athletics. And that was a significant number. But if we don't have to look at that anymore, then we could go back to business as usual with athletics.
So athletics, we cut, well, actually we cut everything across the board, but athletics, that 20% brought us down to the state average or just above it of 2% of our total budget, right?
Yes.
We didn't chop anything below the state average or the benchmark. Given that we're going to have possibly some word from the state, can we expect a revised budget? Sometime, will that be in time for us to address the busing issues for extracurriculars for the kids? Or should this be treated as a separate issue?
I think with the amount of school year that's left and the amount of budget expenditure that we could expect, we could probably make that move now.
I think so.
And I don't believe that it requires any board action. I, I, I know that the, the feeling of the board is, you know, let's try to.
Rick and I had this conversation earlier.
Yeah, try to replace, let's try to replace it. We have been, we've, we've been putting some things back as we thought it was prudent and safe to, you know, maintain staffing levels to, to support kids' needs. This is one that I've just held out on a little bit longer because we didn't, it's just only recently that we had athletics start back up. So it's good to hear some better news budgetary. And, and we can make that adjustment. I can let John know that he can, you know, use his fundraising for other things.
Yeah, I mean, you know, just looking at what we voted on in June, we're going to be close to, you know, the difference here, what we're talking about, close to a $6 million fund balance. So I'd say, yeah, let's, let the, let the buses fly down the road and get them there safely.
I'm with you.
And I definitely applaud waiting until we had a, a really solid feeling that our budget wasn't going to be down. We might not have the money in hand, but at least we have a good indication that it's going to be waiting for that before acting.
Or two ago, we weren't even going to have sports. So there's no need to even have it in the budget. But the pay to play thing, that's
Right.
That's over.
Well, that was going back through my notes.
What about spring sports? They still pay to play?
Yes.
Pay to play has been, has been reinstated and that will certainly support the budget a little bit better. But we were saying
Pay to play was $45,000 and that was what the transportation was. So I mean, I think there was some thought that that was
They were both $45,000 each?
Right.
Approximately. Now, that being said, what I alluded to earlier is the guideline from the High School Athletics Association is 1 to 3% of your budget, total budget for the school goes towards sports. So when it was adjusted earlier, when our budget came down, we're down to, oh please, 26, 26 million?
Well, that's an average though, but we've got a lot of sports that like Britain doesn't have, you know, we got like boys and girls lacrosse, we got soccer. I mean, we have a lot of sports, like we've got like a big time school sports program here.
I think 27 programs and several of them are, are at five level, seven, eight, nine.
Yes.
That was a state average, not a local average.
No, that's what I'm saying, a state average, but there's a lot smaller schools in the state than, especially up north.
But the guideline is strictly a financial one. It doesn't take into account what you're offering. It's saying, this is the guideline for it because you got 26 million to work with and you've got to pay teachers, buildings, all these other things. You start giving away, I mean, we could put 10 million a year into sports and we'd be phenomenal. And our kids would be able to not read when they graduate, you know, there's
But I'm just saying you can't do it based on what you're
Right.
You gotta do, do it based on above average budget and what programs are being offered. So it's a, it's not just a 2% number. It's got to be
No, it's a 1 to 3% for a reason. But we assuredly didn't chop it down to 1% and, and strip it down. We took it to just above two, which was the average. Now that we have more money, you know, if we have more money, we can probably slide them a little bit more to get the little services back.
Well, if we have a lot more sports than a lot of schools too, which benefits a lot of kids, then it wouldn't make sense.
Yes. And not just the sports, but we've got clubs too. I mean, can we make sure, you know?
Whatever we can do, whatever we can do, we will try to do. There's some of the clubs that don't, you know, necessarily lend themselves to moving forward because you got, you can only do 10 people inside and things like that. So there'll, there'll be things that we, that we try to maintain if we can and other things that probably aren't going to happen. And that's unfortunate because a lot of those things are the, exactly the things that kids get excited about coming to school for.
Right.
So we want to try to do what we can. But in terms of the busing, just based on the, the positive information that we finally had, Kelly and I have now, I think we're now just kind of down to making eye contact.
Right.
Two or three seconds and I wait for her to say, I've got good news. And then she doesn't have good news, so we move on. But now that we have, you know, one of the professional organizations saying, hey, it looks like there's a deal. Then I'm, I'm a little more confident at saying, let's do these things.
You know, I would caution to move slowly on this. I would caution move slowly on this because you, you know, it's September, we're in an election year. This whole thing could turn around us on us in November, especially if the numbers, COVID numbers start going up again. And the state will start losing money again and they'll be cutting our budget. So I'm going to say be cautious if you want to start reinstating stuff.
John?
I, well, there's a couple of things. I agree with Becky. When we were going through the budget committee stuff, the pay to play was really the $45,000 pay to play matched the $45,000 transportation budget. So I think the thought there was that the pay to play would cover transportation. The other piece of it is, is that the athletic department also has, you know, a slush fund out there. So if they were going to use some of that money, the true cut to athletics wasn't 20%. It was closer to like six or 7%. So, and I agree with Milk, we need to be cautious until things are actually passed and, you know, the ink is dry on the signatures. I think we still need to, you know, have some caution right now. But there definitely should be money in the athletic budget to cover transportation. And I agree that we need to get the kids to the games.
Well, and we, we typically, typically don't get billed for the athletic transportation until the end of the school year. So running those trips now doesn't cost the district. It's a, it's a deferred cost. So, you know, I think in the interest of, of making sure that our, our families are, you know, feel supported in the athletics program, that I'm, I'm safe recommending that we move forward with transportation.
I, I think that we, that this isn't the time for families to be asked for more money. It was hard enough to ask them for pay to play. We should not be asking them to pay for transportation as well.
Good.
Do you want us to vote on it or are you just going to do it?
No, no, I, I don't think that it requires board action. I, I hear what you're saying and I, I feel the same way. I've just been waiting for even a small amount of positive information to be able to start that.
All right. Any further comments on that topic? All right, we're moving on to our last discussion item, which is our administrative building. This was John's add-on. John, would you like to lead us off?
Yeah, um, you know, this has been one of those things that we've talked about off and on for the past couple of years. And there has been, you know, interest from some outside third parties that looked at the building, but nothing's really come to fruition. I think at this point, whoever these third parties are that have had interest in the building, we give them 30 days to reach out to us and, you know, say they want to do something for it. Or we hire a, you know, a commercial real estate agent to come in and, and list the building and market it. Because I think, you know, it's been, it's been quite a few years that that building has sat there with potential interest, but no one's pulled the trigger. And I think it's time to be a little bit more aggressive with selling that building.
I thought the city was marketing it for us.
Well, they have been for years.
I talked with the city economic director and the city manager about three weeks ago. And they admit that their, their COVID protocols have slowed down this process. But they are interested in ramping it back up, especially, you know, when we reported to them that it's basically vacant aside for some, from some storage that, you know, could be another step closer to someone coming in and taking over. The only potential use for the school year was the Learning Cove. And that was going to be one afternoon a week, but I was notified last week that they have suspended their activities for the year based on the fact that they have some, some older retired folks that run that program. And they're a little bit more of a high risk group. So they've decided to, to postpone what they're going to do. And we'll find a space for them in the future. So the building's empty and ready and the city says that they're ready to, to get a little bit more aggressive. So John, I, I think that we can, we can talk about maybe launching something with a commercial real estate company. But I'd like to see the city try their hand for a little bit longer and, and see if they can re-engage some of those interested parties.
Well, then maybe we give them 60 days, but
There's nobody housed there on a permanent basis. Terry goes back there about two times a week and remembers that we left something and goes and empties a file drawer. We, yeah, we haven't, we look like we left in a hurry, like, yeah, like 1979 Iran embassy.
Well, I've, I've drove by, but I see the dumpster's still there. Maybe we'll cancel that since you're not going to need a dumpster there.
We might.
Are you still using it to clean?
Well, you're going to need big dumpsters.
CLC has a lot of their stuff stored there. So yeah, the potential need for a, a couple of big 40 yard dumpster down the road is, but I don't think, you know, I'd have to talk with Tom to see if there's any weekly pickup of that we could maybe
I know, I know they're not cheap amongst, I've got, you know, a couple that I have to pay for and
John?
Well, I was just going to say, I, I, I think it would be great if the city could find a use for it or work with somebody. But honestly, they've had this in their hands for multiple years. I mean, well beyond the time when we started here, that building was, you know, we, because we talked about it before. It, it's been, I would say at least four years, maybe longer, and there's no traction. So, you know,
The city only had it about a year ago.
What's that?
They've had people in before.
I, I know they had people in before, but the city, didn't they get a designation about a year ago? And that was when they kind of took up the mantle.
Recent designation that they got this, you know, focus from the Right.
Right. I, I, I know we did have offers before. I, I do know what you're talking about. But there was this, this new thing that happened about a year ago that the city had gotten more involved in it.
Well, I think now that we're out and that we have our, I think we said, march forward, moving all of our stuff out. You know, not only anybody hang out in there for, except for Kerry.
I will, I'll invite
I think the more we are serious about moving all our stuff out and we're, we're done over there, you know, once we're 100% done, then we're going to, as long as they know that we're trying to push them down that road. But, but I'm all for having the city.
I can tell you, real estate's happening right now. So hopefully if they're getting their, if they're coming out of their COVID hibernation and looking to get moving out, hopefully we'll hear something.
Okay, I'll, I'll invite the, the city officials to, to speak at our next board meeting.
That's a good idea.
And just give an update on, on where they are in their ability to pursue people and what the market's like.
Because now that we're not in there, it probably costs even less to keep the building, still have to move along and all that, but
Yeah.
Got to move along and keep the heat on.
Do we know, I, I'm going to assume that they did, but do we know if they ever contacted the folks that were interested before that were kind of scared off by that price?
I know that they are still, the city still communicates with that group. But I couldn't tell you what the, you know, the climate of that conversation is.
I think we've got to be real on the price of this thing, to be honest with you. I mean, I wouldn't take it if you were going to give it to me.
Right. Right.
What they're doing with it.
Yeah, someone that's a developer and so forth.
And those, those groups are very dependent on grants. And some of those grants right now are being diverted to COVID related activities. So I, I, I think that we'll hear from them that, that there's still interest, but not active interest until some of these grants are available again. But I'll, I'll invite Jessica to come back and give a quick report so that the board can hear where we stand.
That would be good. I mean, I, I think it'd be great if the city could be involved, but honestly, as a district, we just need to get rid of the building. So whatever, you know, process we have to go through to, you know, sell the building, I think we need to do it.
But whoever buys it would be, have to get permission from the city to do whatever they want to do with it anyway, probably.
Yeah, that's all between them.
To get some zoning things taken care of, but I think that they would want those assurances
Right.
Prior. And I know that the city is, is willing to make those commitments.
And they've already changed the zoning in the area for it. So that's all been done. So.
I will say that the renovation cost estimate for moving the board office to where it is now was about $600,000. And I think we spent 1,200 putting a door in.
I heard you guys bought that.
To seal off. And if you haven't seen the new office, stop by in your way out and we can show you what we've done there, but
Thank you for your cost savings.
Yeah, it was really just a matter of, of making the decision and, and making the move. So.
You couldn't have found a cheaper door?
We probably could have if we'd have done a DIY, DIY. Wanted it done correctly, so we contracted it.
No cookies for a year.
All right. Right up to our action items for the night.
Kevin? Can you hear me?
Yes, Bill.
Why can't we just also contact the commercial real estate, let them give us a price? And why can't we list it also and let the city still try to work on it? I mean, to me, I'm looking at the facts here. You've got a city with an empty industrial park. They're going to be pushing that first and they still got spots in their old industrial park. I mean, I, I think we need to look at our, our own property and market it ourselves personally.
It is a monthly expense.
It is, but we also want to make sure, you know, that someone just doesn't knock it down and put up a high rise or something there. I mean, or, you know, I think with having the city involved, they've already designated as a lower income housing unit for seniors. What I believe they've done is zoned it for that. Which I think fits in perfectly in that area. So I, I, I'd like to hear the city come back in and present again. And I mean, we don't want to have someone can knock it down and then just leave a empty nasty lot there, just leave the building there. You know, I don't, I don't think we want to do that to the city of Tecumseh and the residents of Tecumseh. So if we can work with the city and they can find a developer that's willing to do something like that, lower income housing for seniors, I think that's great for the city and for that area and for senior citizens. But I hate to see just any developer walk in that we don't know who they are and, and do something that isn't good for the city. So.
That's true, but at the same time, we don't want to continue to pay for it. So let's get the city in here.
We also have an obligation to the citizens of Tecumseh too. So.
We have an obligation to not spend money that we don't need. We have an obligation to not spend money that we don't need to spend.
Well, I think we need to start with uh having our friends from the city come in and talk to us about it and give us an update, maybe put some heat under that fire at their end and see if it's gonna go somewhere quick. And if it's not gonna get the head of steam up, then we'll look at the other options.
And I can tell you to, to demo it, it'll be probably about a half a million. To just have it as a lot.
Both of them, yeah.
You know, you can always put deed restrictions too when you sell property and what they can do with the property, so that wouldn't be a problem.
All right, that wraps up comment on that. Then we are on to our action items tonight. We have our policy. Three thousand and four thousand.
Right, we brought to you uh two weeks ago, the revised policy for the three thousand and four thousand series. One deals with professional staff. And one with support staff. A lot of the language is similar, but not the same. And, and there is language that is also different because of those things uh require different. Approaches. So uh it's been through um the, the policy committee and uh been through discussion, now just asking for approval. And we're already working on the five thousand series.
Could I get a motion?
I hereby move to approve the following board policies, the three thousand series professional staff policies and the four thousand series support staff policies.
Support.
Roll call, Tim.
Aye.
Becky.
Aye.
Suzanne.
Aye.
Mill.
Aye.
John?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion passes. Next, we have the board member appointment for current board vacancy. This, as we have discussed and I have sent out, is a term which will expire on December thirty first of this year. Could I get a motion on one of our two candidates, please?
I hereby move to appoint Dr. Tritt to fill the board vacancy position to complete the term which expires in December of twenty twenty.
I'll second that.
Motion and support, roll call vote, Tim?
Aye.
Suzanne?
Aye.
Becky?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Mill?
Aye.
And the board, or the chair votes aye. Motion passes. We have an appointee. We will reach out to him and uh, as I said earlier, or I emailed earlier. We have officially appointed someone now and we can have them seated after the thirty days. And meet the requirements of the law, so we don't cede our authority. Therefore, we do not have to have a special meeting. We can do it at our next regular meeting.
Well, he can just go down to the office and get sworn in. So.
Yeah.
Even before that.
That's an option too.
Yeah, and then we could just do ceremonial one at the next meeting, so just to make sure it's covered. So I would do that, so.
At his desire.
Yeah.
Whatever he wants to do. If he wants to go down to the office and say hi to Terry or Beck.
We'll reach out to uh Dr. Tritt and set something up.
Yeah.
Well, if he's watching, welcome.
Yes, indeed, welcome.
Can I recommend that you also send Mr.
That's right.
Last action item, the bank signatory appointment, Becky?
I hereby move to appoint Kelly Glenn, Director of Business Services, to perform the following financial functions on behalf of the school district. Primary signer on all checks written by Tecumseh Public Schools, with the superintendent as alternate on all district accounts. Authorization to deposit school funds in established depositories and authorization to make investments of available monies in the several funds of the district and transfer monies as needed. Do I have support?
Support.
I was waiting. All right, roll call mode. Mill?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Suzanne?
Aye.
Becky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Passes unanimously. Next is our consent agenda. Becky?
I hereby move to approve the consent agenda, which includes the following items, minutes from the regular board meeting of August twenty fourth, twenty twenty, and the monthly check registry for August of twenty twenty.
Support.
Roll call vote, Tim?
Aye.
Becky?
Aye.
Suzanne?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Mill?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimously approved. Superintendent's report, update on our twenty twenty and twenty twenty one superintendent goals. Rick?
Yes, one of the included documents in your packet is a review of those four goal areas um with uh update language. Uh, item one had to do with governance and board relations, and that is the commitment to update our policy manual. Uh, I can tell you that I will fall short of achieving. The goal as worded. We will by the end of the year have an updated policy manual. However, the administrative guidelines are probably gonna take another year of uh writing. Um, our Niola rep, uh Mark Kleinhands is also doing uh an interim superintendent's job with Taylor Public Schools. So. Uh, his schedule and um, you know, this little curve we were thrown by COVID um just did not allow us to stay on pace. So. Well, we'll get there eventually. We'll have policy done by the end of this calendar year, I'm pretty sure. And then we'll start working on the administrative guidelines. Um, in terms of the um reorganization, you know, we, we talked about it in May and in, in May, my recommendation was to. Uh, half implement the changes so that we could keep kids at the building that they most recently uh left. And, and I think that a lot of the community appreciated that, but. That does shortchange that goal. Um, that'll be spread out over two years now. Um, and then in terms of um the strategic planning, also uh, just taking on one more uh large issue like strategic planning. Just was completely hijacked by the pandemic. So we will set it aside and, and possibly when things are better uh in the spring, we will have um, you know, potentially. Bond issue by that time and, and really be able to set our focus on a, a larger amount of time. And then the fourth goal had to do with my plan of entry. Uh, that was um presented to you in, in April, so that portion has been completed. But those were the goals that we talked about in January and that's a status report. The next step in the evaluation process will be to have um the official. Evaluation, including the goals review and then also the um, the checklist in the actual evaluation. And we'll probably have um Mark, who was here. In January, helping set those goals uh back for a session with the board in November to walk through that. So that's the update on the goals.
Should we adjust some of these like by August thirty first, twenty twenty, since COVID hit?
No, I, you know, I don't, I don't.
Leave them like there.
I don't think that it's necessary to adjust them, you know, you just.
Just leave them and we'll.
If you don't make progress, full progress towards a goal, there's always an explanation why and you can take that into consideration. Um, achievement of the goals is a portion of the evaluation. So.
Right.
It's, it's not the whole, it's not a win or lose.
I, I completely understand COVID throwing the curveball in there. It obviously has on many things. Um. With the, the strategic planning, I know uh at the winter convention, Kevin and I had taken a class on strategic planning and, and that was something that we were really. Focused in on um getting that together and, and bringing that together for our community. I, I understand that there's a lot of things going on right now, but. Could it be something that maybe we start some committee on to start fielding that?
I would say that um following this uh Building Futures Committee, once they wrap up their work uh into September.
Yeah, that makes.
They'll be coming to the board um probably the end of October, make a presentation. And then I think at that time it would be uh. Feasible that we could form a new committee to begin talking about the strategic planning process. But I would say we would want that process to expire.
Okay.
I think you're gonna wanna hire someone to come in and do the strategic plan.
Exactly.
Independent. Um.
That needs to be facilitated by.
Yeah.
Someone from the professional organization.
Yeah.
All right, anything else for Rick before we move on? Check uh. Always quiet on that. Okay, that takes us to item scheduled for the next agenda. We're gonna have good news, which is yet to be determined, although I'm sure there'll be good news.
Absolutely.
Discussion items will be the nineteen and twenty district audit and we'll have action items on our extended continuity of learning plan and probably a few other things in there too. Most notably, the city should be here. Maybe one or two other things. Takes us into our closing public comment. We did not have any registrants for that public comment either tonight. Leads us into board member comments and discussion. Any comments or discussion from board members?
Yeah, Kevin, Mill. You got me?
I got you, Mill. Go ahead.
I'd like to have either you or Rick reach out to Mr. Schmidt and tell him thank you very much. He's a very good candidate for the position. But I think with the short term, I think Mr. Tripp was definitely the, our choice. So I'd like to see him reach out and tell him thank you.
It was on my agenda. I assume it was on Rick's agenda also.
We will.
Thank you.
Any further board member comments or discussion?
Yeah, I'll throw, oh. Just wanted to say thank you to Rick, all the administrators, all the teachers, everybody that worked so hard over the summer getting things moved and, you know. It was really nice to see Rick's video on uh, on Tuesday night or Wednesday morning, whenever he shot it. He looked exhausted, but the fact that he told us that. It was just a normal school day was awesome. So thank you, everybody.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I would second that.
Yeah, it's, it's been a, a definitely a learning experience that I hope I never use these skills again.
I don't blame you.
When uh, when Lexi came home and I asked her about the day and as I said, I've gotta tell Rick, he's gotta know that it was just a school day and that's exactly what it needed to be.
It was, it was a wonderful quote and, and really, really the paramount of our success is when a, when we hear that a student is saying, you know, it just felt like school. Because that's all we wanted. We just wanted it to feel like school.
And that's a culmination of everybody's efforts. So thank you so much.
So many people worked so hard.
Lot of bank grabbers walking out of here.
Yeah, very Wild West.
Yeah, there's no doubt when elementary kids come home and the last thing they mention is a mask or COVID precautions, it's a success.
Yeah.
It's normal school for that age range and they're pretty honest about it, so.
Brutally.
Brutally honest about it. All right, that's gonna bring us right to our adjournment. Could I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Support. Thank you, Suzanne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at eight oh six P M. Thank you, everyone.